Thank you, Mayor.
I started ours here. Evening, and welcome to the City Council Workshop on the library configuration, September 4, 2024. Would please remember to silence your phones. And I think we were going to hear a presentation from the designers. They have one with the city manager. So I'll turn it directly over to the city manager, Mark Regis.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just to bring everybody up to speed where we are, we went through a pretty extensive preliminary conceptual design process for the new library over the previous year. We got a lot of things ironed out as far as what the architectural design was going to be, what the building was going to look like, how the building generally would sit on the site over Quinn Strong Park. And we got most of those issues ironed out. One of the last issues that we were trying to wrestle with at the end of the Phase 1 was the site configuration in terms of basically how the parking lot was going to lay out and how that related to the building. So since we're running out of time in terms of getting decisions made and getting the referendum on the ballot and then focusing on the referendum, we decided to push that decision to the beginning of Phase 2, which is where we are now, working through the initial portion of the project that will end up in construction drawings. So we pushed that to the beginning part of Phase 2. And this is kind of the first domino that needs to fall, the first direction we need on how the site lays out before we move into subsequent phases where we start to actually do the harder design of the building, the interior layout, and how that relates to the site. So that's what we're looking for tonight, some direction on how the parking lays out. And we have Peter Bullock here with us, which you remember from HBM, who we worked together with last year, as well as Ryan Seacrest with RVI, Planning and Landscape Design, that put together the concepts for you. And then we'll walk you through sort of where we are right now in the process and work through design to construction drawings, and then take a look at how the different site layouts relate and the pros and cons of those. So with that, I'll turn it over to Peter to start us off here.
Thanks, Mark. Well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to be back and jumping into Phase 2 here. As Mark kind of gave us an overview already, I'll just add a few additional kind of points for reference as we move into the succession. Mark mentioned the design in Phase 1, which basically developed the buildings, the architecture, the placement of the building, the idea of all the kind of enhancements we want to do around this project. And tonight, we're talking specifically about some parking options, which we'll get to in a moment. But this is the concept of the site that was where we left off at the end of Phase 1. The building at the corner of Packwood and Maitland, Library Building, development of the park, and then the parking just to, I think, the east or north west of the building there between A&amp;H and the library. There is a lot of site development in terms of things happening in the park that we're going to develop as part of Phase 2. But the most kind of major elements is the building at the corner, the green space and the park activity and the parking. So these are some of the images of the architecture, the rendering of the project. This is the front facade facing Packwood Avenue, which is meant to be an approach and an entry to the Library Building, a plaza space that would draw people in at this juncture into the library. The west side of the Library Building will also be an entrance, and that is adjacent to the parking area I showed you just on the map when we left off from Phase 1. And this is the primary entry for anyone that would arrive by car. Also pedestrian access to this point, anybody communicating back and forth on foot from A&amp;H site to the library site. This would be that primary entry. And in fact, we had developed the idea of a connection between A&amp;H Park Property and the library and have a very distinguished and deliberate pathway between those two kind of events to the front entrance of the library. And so we could talk a little bit about anything we did in Phase 1 as we get into the discussion about parking. In a moment here, I'm going to hand over to Ryan to get into the details of our options with parking and get your feedback and comment. But one thing that mentioned as we get into those is that everything kind of affects everything else. And so in the end of Phase 1, the building was designed with the entrance on the west facade as the primary entry. So keep in mind that any kind of shift of major elements here will have a kind of a ripple effect throughout the entire project. Not that any of those aren't insurmountable, it's just that there is a lot that had been developed and proved to move forward with out of Phase 1 that we'd have to consider. So with that, Ryan, I'll turn it over to you and walk us through these concepts.
Good evening, Council. Before I start out, I'd like to go back actually a slide and just say, you know, when we went into this project, I thought about all the things that I admire about Maitland. So I was involved in Independence Lane and the park out here, and that was an easy job for us because this building, as we sit in now, proudly sits at a corner and announces its presence as a Maitland city center. And that's an amazing thing. So there's not a lot you have to do with design of a park or a public space when you've got great architecture anchoring the corners. So when we walked into this, we said, clearly, that's what we need to do. We need to celebrate Maitland, we need to make proud civic moments at the corners. So that's what we've done with this building. So as we walked to it, we threw a few different concepts, and of course, we went back and forth a few times. And where we landed is Concept 1 that you see on the screen. So when we left you, what was it, last year? We left you in this moment where we had freed up a little bit of space next to the Jermaine Marble building on the, sorry, the west end, so top of your page, this page is north to the right. So on the top of your page, we freed up some space, which is part of an earlier agreement. We heard that message. At one time, it was mentioned as a sculptural garden. That has since passed, but still, there was an expectation that that space be dedicated for an open space. We said, we can rearrange the parking, be more efficient, dedicate space for the adequate amount of vehicles, which is 82, which is above the amount that would be required to serve this building, but also free up the space that lets them have their events in the way that they did before and not feel like they're encumbered by the parking. So we rearranged it, and this is the arrangement you see today. And this frees up, we feel, the greatest amount of open space to preserve the trees, to preserve the amount of open space that operates with the building effectively and functionally. So the design was, you can cross over from this campus where we are today, up Packwood, across the intersection, be presented by a great civic moment with the building forefront, walk through that, see the lawn in the background, and continue through that building. And it's a great civic space, so that's why we laid it out the way it is today. This was a formal design. We called it Concept 2 because it was an initial, but we moved beyond it. So this, as a reminder, this had the parking that was up near the Jermaine Marble building, next to the event space. We heard some conflict on that. It didn't serve well, it was against some agreements earlier. We were able to actually take this exact amount of parking, 82 spaces, make the parking lot more efficient into the arrangement you saw in Concept 1. Other than that, it's pretty much the same concept, just in another configuration of parking, but we actually made more open space through a more efficient design. Lastly, this is a concept, and actually, we explored this early on in the RFQ process. We put this design together and we put it in front of, about the selection committee. And we've heard since then that there might be an idea that perhaps you could do a drop-off loop that comes around the east side of the site or the bottom side of your page here and orients into a larger parking lot next to the railroad tracks to the existing parking lot. We agree that this could free up some open space next to Jermaine Marble. However, this site still requires a back of house, so we put a small parking lot on the west side of the building or the top side of your page, which still presents a challenge. It still breaks up the open space there, and that's for your dumpsters and what have you, being that location staff parking. So it's no longer the front of the building, back of house in between those two uses. So it's not presented in such a civic kind of majestic way. Now, the parking does exist against the railroad tracks. However, you know, you're going to run into situations where we have a lot of tree canopy there to expand the parking lot, it's going to impact that. And it's also going to break into what we feel is a more natural progression into the site. So that process of a moment I talked about when I started this, this building sitting on the corner, city center sitting on the corner, that building perhaps sitting on the corner of Packwood will be diminished by a lane wrapping around it. So an additional redundant piece of traffic dedicated to cars would break up that, scoot the building further into Jermaine Marble, and also eat into that open space that we could have freed up. Now, it does provide 82 spaces, however, it comes at a cost, right? So there's always pros and cons. It changes the internal aspects of the building, too. We're flipping access points to the building. So anything you agreed upon early on in our first phase perhaps is impacted internally in the building. The inside of the building, access points are necessarily tied. So I'm going to leave you with this. There's the three concepts on the board. I'll hand it back over to Peter, and we can have some good discussion.
So questions and comments and discussion, I guess, on these, we can go into any blow-up detail, but the three on the screen, just for reference of the three individual different arrangements. Where would you like to start with any kind of questions or comments, or would you like us to elaborate more on any of the aspects that we summarized already?
I do have a couple of questions, if it's okay. So looking at this, where is my, I'm sorry, on number three? How do I make that turn? If I go down and I come in off of Packwood and I don't find a space there, and I just want to keep heading down the railroad track, and I get down to the end there, and there's no parking spaces? Where's my turnaround to come back the other way to look at the other spaces?
There's not. You would go out, you would exit the site then and come back around on Maitland, back to Packwood, or come back in.
So that's a very narrow option.
Basically, one line of parking through there.
The egress and ingress, how far? And I'm just looking at it thinking, is that going to be any traffic problems with like, if somebody's dropping off somebody right there, or there's a car backed up, if somebody comes on? What is the distance that we're looking at from entering the driveway to the egress and ingress of the road?
Yeah, so that's a concern of ours with the proximity of that curb cut to the intersection of Maitland and Packwood. You know, the library has programming events that draw a big crowd, and when they let out, there is not a lot of queue lane there to deal with that intersection. So, you know, a preferred approach would be to have that curb cut much further down into Packwood to alleviate that immediate congestion at that intersection. I think that the other point of queuing is if we flip the building back around and flip the interior programming and have the entry over here, where people would be dropped off, a patron or drop off or pickup is kind of in the middle of that major traffic flow through the site. And there really isn't a lot of room there to carefully or maybe safely do that as well as in the prior two concepts. So I think in queuing and laying width and length is a struggle more on this concept than the other two.
And we don't have any parking across the street. We just use that parking, right? Parking lot when we have events, is that right?
Parking across the street is a private office parking lot.
I guess I'll, I have one more question, then I'm going to save my comments till later. Is it my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm just visiting this, for parking structures, the going price for parking space, is it $20,000 right now? Is that what I'm hearing?
I have not visited that in a while. About a year or two ago, it was about $20,000, so it's probably more now. But that is not a reasonable number for a structure like this.
Yes, we look at 20, 25 or something like that.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll save my comments till later. Thank you.
Are there any cost considerations with Option 3, just in terms of the amount of design changes that would be involved?
You know, like, there could be, but what would happen with that one is that the approval of the design that was developed in Phase 1 would be basically completely changed. And the main entry was on the west. All of the spaces related to that and the function of the library and the interior would have to be reconfigured. And that's not insurmountable, and that's not something we're saying, no, we won't do. But it is something that would have to be done and probably impact timing, too. You know, we'd have to go back and undo and redo.
Because I know we have a new design phase, you know, that's different from the first design phase in terms of our contracts and everything, but I didn't know how that, just as one of the other considerations.
No, and we're not here, we're not, there's no flag up the pole yet saying, you know, there's cost issues here.
Okay, so I guess that wasn't my understanding from the way we left it. I thought we had left it at, all things being equal, we just need to figure out a harder configuration that would, I didn't understand at the time, that if we have to come back and figure out a different parking configuration, it's going to add significant costs. So I hope that's not what you're telling us now.
What I am saying, though, is that the interior was developed and approved with the exterior architecture of the building that would be, now needed to be changed if we moved the entry to the east side of the building. If you recall back at the beginning of Phase 1, we actually had the entry on the east side. And through discussions and evolution of the design, it did move to the west as a preferred approach. And then that's where the concept development was further. It would need to be redesigned moving into this next phase. At this point, I wouldn't say that that's a huge cost issue, but it is a lot of work.
Okay. So my concerns really have to do with the plans 1 and 2, which you all seem to favor, really absolutely cut off A&amp;H from the park. There is no access to the park from Jermaine Marble or from A&amp;H's campus. It, there's, it's just, I mean, in both of those, the parking lot goes right up to the property line, or the parking lot actually kind of heats up. You know, number one, it goes to the property line in what would be, I guess, the southwest corner, you know? And in the other one, it would just be a parking lot out behind Jermaine Marble. So that's what it, you know, this is, I voiced these concerns once ago when we talked about all this, and that's why I suggested we keep the parking where it is on the site, which is where it is in number three there, pretty much. I mean, it doesn't look like that, that's pretty much the configuration we currently have on the site, I can tell you, in number three.
Yeah.
And if you do that, then of course, you leave that green space all open there to A&amp;H, the site, because so the two work together to both address the park. And Options 1 and 2, you really strand Art History Museums, you know, away from the park, and there's just no way to get around that. I mean, I guess you could cut through a parking lot, but that doesn't really solve the aesthetic issue. It might solve kind of a safety access issue, but not an aesthetic issue. So I understand what you're saying about, you know, the building facing on Packwood and making a statement there. I think what you lose, though, by making that statement on Packwood, which is a difficult intersection anyway, what you necessarily lose was Art History Museum's access to the park. And I'm not sure it's worth that. So, you know, that's why So, you know, that's why, and I think I suggested in the earlier meetings, that we have that kind of cut-through, you know, or leave the parking lot the way it is and have drive-through, kind of portico share out front. For days like this, if somebody wants to get to the library, you know, you can drive right under, let, you know, your kids off, your grandmother off, or whoever off, and pass on through to Packwood. Because it's, you know, it's an easy thing to do. It's, I hate to bring this up, but it's what the Winter Park Library does. I mean, they have a nice little drive, drive-by right around the front of it, in the entire front of the building.
It's the worst.
I don't think it works very well.
Well, their parking lot is different. Their parking lot is different. They're saving the access to the building. You can drive to the front and drop somebody off and move on. You know, the parking that we have takes care of that in the, where it currently is. So I think the choice we're making today is, do we want to cut A&amp;H off and cut off its access to the park? And, or do we want to leave the parking where it is and restructure the front of the building?
May I kind of react to some of your comments? And I think that everything you're reading into that are really important things to be considering at the early stage of where we are now in this design. What I would say is that this is still very schematic, so it's not enhanced with features that will help those connections. The one that we did in phase one, which was a very simple one, is this major east-west connection, which I had the rendering of that from, directly from A&amp;H to the front door of the library for pedestrian link through to the both events. That's one thing that could be fully established and help. And then where the south here is the shelter area and all of that and the stormwater pond, which will still be developed, it might be retention, it may be detention, we're not yet sure, we haven't gotten into those details, but that likely could get reconfigured and actually be smaller than shown on this drawing right now, too. So that everything that's to the south of that parking edge can be developed for connectivity from one area of park to another area of park. So I would just...
That doesn't change the fact that the parking lot's five feet from the property line, in the far upper corner there.
Yeah.
I mean, you can do what you want with Stormwater Pond, but if you put the parking lot way up there, I mean, it would be on the northwest part of this, because we're flopping to the north going the other way, if you did it south.
I think he's addressing the connectivity issue.
Right here.
Right.
Yeah.
But if you're talking about reconfiguring the Stormwater Pond, is whether or not you can, you know, kind of push that out. You still, my point is that your parking lot's still just feet from the property line.
Yeah, what I'm envisioning, and maybe this isn't the thing that would really happen, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but from the main event space that's just to the north of the open green space here, I would see the development of park so that there's a progression from A&amp;H through here.
But when you just kind of made that move, though, that's a very narrow little area.
It is narrow, it's not. This is, there's a lot of area here. And I think that this could be pulled back, this could be pushed this way, there's still a lot of area here to make a solid connection if that is the directive to make.
Isn't this an existing parking lot there, right?
Yeah.
Where's the existing parking lot?
This is all newly proposed. There is an existing parking lot there now.
Right.
Well, just right where the Jermaine, just on the Marble building is, right there.
So basically, option three is like, the little back parking lot is the existing parking lot?
No, no, that's, the existing parking lot is larger than what this is showing. This was, as Ryan described it, we do need a back-of-house to the library. We need deliveries, we need functional aspects for in and out of materials, and those are that's the background.
I'm just trying to figure out where the existing parking lot is.
Well, that's...
It is, or more or less that.
But it takes up all the space.
Here's my issue. In a perfect world, we could have all of these things. Option three, that parking is horrific, in my opinion, but for all, because of the ingress, egress. If you picture how wide that is and then there's one-way traffic, that's, you can...
Does the current, is currently like that, right?
First of all, the current parking is terrible. As someone who, if you have like a minivan or something, it is hard to not back in, like, to other cars. That looks narrower because of the way that you see, you can come in on that narrow thing. This is not the same, as I said before, the Winter Park Library is actually a great example of why this is terrible, but their little drive-through drop-off is at their event center, which is something we don't have, and they only have like four parking spaces up there. But this, you can see, like, where you would come in is really narrow. I assume that's one car wide. That doesn't, I don't know if I'm just looking at the scale incorrectly because it's all like, you know, it looks like a Sims thing to me, but...
Yeah, it is, it tended to be two lane, but one lane, one direction.
There's not a curb cut there right now.
There is not.
No, so the curb cut is where the existing parking is. So that was kind of the point, is that we put that in, that's where the hazard is going to be.
My personal opinion, and obviously we're going to differ on this, it's clear, but my personal opinion is that the issue with the Art and History Museum should be a consideration. I don't think that should be the paramount consideration, because what, if we build this whole big library and then we have parking, I understand that the number of parking spaces is the same for all of them, so, you know, in terms of people's concerns that are using the library about how much parking there is, that we're not going to address any differently in any of the options. But if parking is difficult to transverse, particularly with people getting little kids out and babies and all of that, as someone who has very recently been in that position, I have concerns about it and about like the, all the different concerns that are being raised. And I think that the number of people in our community who are going to care about the parking situation versus the number of people in our community using the library are going to care about the parking up next to the Art and History Center, I just think it's no contest. And so to me, that is why I have that concern, because I'm thinking about the community as a whole.
Okay, but just so I understand, I'm not being argumentative, I'm wondering why that parking, let's say the bulk of that parking there, I mean, in the long, you know, on the left side of this slide there, yeah, that long, and then, which is what is currently there, and that's kind of in-and-out parking. And then the larger bulk of it, as you get closer there. And I'm just asking the question, why is that more difficult than if you flopped it and had the parking up?
Do you have the visual where it showed, that I have on my screen, that shows the three next to each other, so you can see them all at the same time? I don't, I'm assuming, since you guys are professionals, this is to scale.
They are.
As opposed to if my children drew it or myself, because I don't, you know, would assume. But to me, just looking at those side by side, it is clear that that looks like more of a disaster. That's just how it looks to my eye, and I'm also hearing what the professionals have to say.
And I would like to make one really important point now, too. I think somebody brought up, Mayor, you might have mentioned this, the design professional. We design libraries all over the country, and we've been doing that, the firm's been doing that for 50 years. Parking is a safety, is a hassle a lot of times, and is a big problem for municipalities and operational aspect of the library.
Hence why we're here tonight.
Yeah, well, no, there's no doubt in my mind, as a design professional, that this arrangement of flow through the parking is a thousand times safer and better than that one. Now, having said that, doesn't mean that we can't work to make it as best it can be, but there will come a point where we do need to step back and say, are we doing the right layout that is the best, safe, functional, and, you know, meeting the needs of these two facilities that will be anchoring this larger parcel?
Why that is, why, I mean, is it because it's diagonal, parking?
No, I mean, you've got curves, turns, intersections. Here you have basically one flow around in and out, there's no dead end, there's no pinch point, there's plenty of queuing space. But you're talking about having maybe a portico share here for drop-off of the library. We have that already built in on the west end with ample space for people to maneuver around when people are dropping or picking people up. There's just a more intuitive and safer arrangement of the parking in these two than this one.
So I know when we look at projects and we have to give fire trucks a turn radius, we don't do that even with this parking in three, which when I looked at this earlier, I was like, ooh, I like three. And then I started looking, and I was like, oh, this, no, this does not work at all. And I'm going to, another good advice before I go on my tangent, do you have anything to add before I go on my tangent?
Sure. And again, sorry for, everywhere I turn, I hit flooding and disasters for traffic. So I apologize for being so late. But I, I'm the John on this one from the three option. I'm interested to hear all the problems with it, because I want to learn. But I, to me, the layout of having parking, I don't know what was initially raised, but we have a parking issue with events downtown, we have a parking issue with events at Lake Lily. To me, having parking up front makes more sense. Now, the design that's currently on three, could we rework it? And could the access and pathways that you're talking about be fixed by doing some tweaks here and there? And then also, there's currently a curb cut on Maitland Avenue for the office building that's currently standing, it's a little bit farther there, right? And so I don't know, I think there's options with option three to provide for the parking up front along the railroad tracks and then open up the park to everybody in the back there and potentially solve a couple of different problems. Do I, I understand some of the issues with it's currently laid out, but I also think that there are some things you can do on the backside. I'm not sure how useful marking out with the 12 spaces in the back there versus making that some sort of drop-off.
They said they have to have that there.
No, no, I'm not talking about, you don't, you don't have to have 12 spaces there. You can have drop-off and dumpster spaces there. But I think there's ways to rework potentially three, keeping the parking up front and not cutting up, cutting up property in half, essentially. Because I do think there are issues with, in my opinion, two and one. Not that there aren't issues with three, but there are issues with two and one that seem to me that are harder to fix, because no matter how you do it, you're putting parking in the middle of the park.
What is that issue exactly? Because the connectivity, I think, is, can be addressed. I mean, to say that there's no access, to me, is ludicrous. First of all, there's clearly walking paths considered, and I hear the architects saying that there are other ways. When it comes to being close to the property line, I remember having the conversation before and it's being said again today, that there could be trees and different things to kind of block sound and visual. So similarly to what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing that's frustrating me, honestly, is that there's professionals saying something pretty strongly and that we're saying, well, we don't like that. And so we're pretty sure that other things can be done, even though no one's telling us that. And that's frustrating me. I'm not understanding, to me, it just seems like we're trying to get to the conclusion that you want without logic.
Can I go on my tangent now?
I like to leave, I have some logic.
Well, we're all lawyers up here, except for this guy.
Yeah, and that's why I can't get a word in edgewise.
I don't have the lawyer.
No, I mean, we're good at being illogical.
So I think that this is, I think what we're trying to do is solve problems, which the, there are, I guess you can't see it, I think you can, but there are issues with the fact that there's a parking lot that runs through the middle of the park. And does that, is that the best solution? I mean, I think we can, it's not to say that it may be the only, it might be the one to have, because if there's, other possibilities just aren't great. But in a perfect world, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have, you would do it some other way. We're not dealing with perfection here, we're not going to try to get to perfection, but we want to try to solve as many problems as we can without creating more. So I just, I'm not quite sure, when I looked at this, I didn't, I didn't think that three, it seemed like an attempt to fix it sort of with what's existing, but not kind of maybe doing a little bit more redesigning there and some potentially more work on the traffic flows and patterns on three and utilizing some other ways to get in. I think the connection, having two access points, I don't know how many feet, yards apart those would be between those, that one standalone parking lot and then the other one, that does, that seems like maybe not the most useful of designs. And so having, why you would break that up with that, with two access points and not have one that kind of connected through, there might be reasons for it. Again, but looking at this, I just thought that three gave us some options to keep parking up front for other venues and then also leaving that park from an open space in the back. But I just think that there was maybe more we could do with three.
Absolutely, so if, if I may, can I, there's so much going on. And what we're going to do is, we're going to work through every one of these to more detail based on your input, so I assure you that. But I'd like to just kind of comment on some of these, I think it would be helpful as I'm hearing it. I think the two major things I'm hearing is connection or disconnect from A&amp;H to the park with the parking there. And so I think we want to look at ways that we don't do that. Even if the parking is there, I think there are ways we can make that connection still very strong. The idea of parking for the city or the, you know, south of or east of Maitland Avenue, I think there's not a lot of difference, in my opinion, of whether it's on the east side or the west side of this building to serve that kind of overflow parking or need for larger parking. And, you know, from a functional standpoint, we can come with all of the concerns or pitfalls of operating through and functioning through a space like this versus this, so that there's a real clarity of what the concern would be. I mean, I don't think anyone, from our standpoint, design standpoint, or you're, and want to create anything that's unsafe or a headache or a frustration or really a lot that doesn't really work. So, did you have any other things to kind of react to on?
Yeah, I do. I, you know, we heard a couple of things, I think, access conflicts, we asked why, why does three have more conflicts than the other two? And I think from a pedestrian standpoint, we're doing streetscapes, for example, to remove ourselves from a parking lot at a library in a park, we always look for points of conflict. So can you reduce your points of conflict between vehicles and pedestrians? And in a rural count, three provides two additional points of conflict, one being the additional access here and then, of course, the existing. And we're removing on the other two, we're removing the one over on the south end, and then, of course, we're adding another in three on the north end. That adds an additional point of conflict. I also think the way folks are accessing the site on three, having to walk across an additional lane when they approach the site on foot, perhaps if they're visiting the whole campus, they would have to cross an additional lane from Packwood to get to the front door, and that's an additional point of conflict. So we would like, best-case scenario, being a city that you can navigate it, where you reduce your points of conflict, and it's more about the open space, civic engagement, walking across the streets where they exist block to block without additional and redundant points of conflict. And I think three adds to that rather than improving it. I also think that, if we think about parking lots, let me get through this, it's going to sound weird to start with, but if you think about parking, parking lots, of course, they're very vehicular to start with, we don't think about pedestrians. I would offer that in both one and two, particularly one, I think that it offers experience that could be used in events, right? So imagine it wasn't a day-to-day, nine-to-five, or whatever it may be, library hour, it's not a weekend, you have an event here, food trucks, other types of events, festivals, that could take place on a plaza-like experience in a parking lot that doesn't have to be asphalt, that could be decorative in nature and provides an additional experience between A&amp;H and the library that could take place in that facility that necessarily couldn't take place in an ADA manner or in a manner that's on a paid plaza-like experience in a park space. So if we leverage that parking lot as a central ground, a nexus of these facilities rather than a separation, by thinking it's a void, it's this vehicular-dominated area, instead, this is a campus asset that could be leveraged in other ways that we think outside of its manner of being a parking lot day-to-day.
There's nowhere to park, that's the problem. I mean, there's no, there'd be nowhere for those people to park to get to that park-like experience in the parking lot. They need to park in the parking lot.
Sure, on a day-to-day basis. But if you think about festivals, there's parking lots out here. So this is a street that is an example of that. On a day-to-day basis, all of these folks park along this street, often this gets shut down and becomes a plaza-like experience, they park elsewhere and they come here and they park there. So it's just a trade-off. Certainly wouldn't have an event here when you have a event there, but I just open that up for conversation. A parking lot can be something else other than a space for vehicles.
And we have the existing library, the current library, is parking is going to remain there, it's right adjacent to that park.
Correct, yeah.
So one thing about three, I think, is in, between two and three, in the current configuration of the parking lot that's there, that this shared space with A&amp;H, you know, it's actually not shared, it's used probably exclusively by A&amp;H right now, but it's the, it's the, it's a parking lot, a small parking lot between Jermaine Marble and the library. And in one and two, you've kind of maximized the size of it. I mean, it's, I don't know, I'm going to guess, there's 30 spaces there easily, in just that chunk between the library and A&amp;H and Jermaine Marble. And in three, you've shrunk that down to, you know, a fifth of the size. And, you know, the space... And, you know, the space that I'm concerned about, I'm less concerned about that current parking lot right there because it's already gone. I mean, it's, it's currently a parking lot, I don't mind if tomorrow it's a parking lot. I don't think we need to open it up and gain green space in that little area because it's, it's not doing anything for anybody. It's not conducive to any other place between either of those campuses. So why wouldn't you take, you know, let's look at that little arrow going into the one on number three there. You can see the one on the far right, which is now the tiny parking lot, which is, I think, what you were calling back in the house before. Exactly. And make that the same size as it is in one and two and alleviate your parking problem down there at the bottom of number three. I mean, if you move 30 spaces up into that lot, then you, then you don't have the problem that, that you have with all that diagonal parking in the bulk of the space at the bottom of slide number three.
So are you saying, leave this?
Well, I mean, you guys are professionals, but you know, I will do just as, shrink that down and enlarge the other bulk. And what does that do for your safety aspect?
Yeah, I think our biggest concern of safety is just immediately around the building and the curves and the turns and the drop-off zones and.
So I said, okay, so I think we needed to, to talk about two different things then. Because I think what we keep conflating is one, safety issue is the, the drive lane there. And everybody calling that parking and drive lane. And it is currently connected and that's, you can see why people do that. But are you, I think what you're ultimately getting to is that the drive lane and the portage share idea just doesn't work because it's a safety problem. And the parking aside, the drive lane's a problem. Is that what you're saying?
I would agree with that, yeah.
Okay. So that, so if you have that idea, you know, you can work with parking. If you, if you remove that aspect of it, you can still have the parking not in the area that's between A&amp;H and the park. So if you just took the portage share out of the slide number three altogether and moved some of the parking back up into the space between the library and Jermaine Marble.
Well, you're getting at something that might be a really, really nice thing. And if I can say what I think you're saying and you corrected, but so this stuff goes away.
Right.
You can have access here, come in here parking, maybe this is a little lesson and maybe there's a nice roundabout here.
There currently is.
That's a drop-off point. And that also serves as you coming in, you can then get back out, so you don't have to look for a place to turn around. It gets rid of all the conflict here and then we can get another area of parking right here, removing it from this area of the park. Is that kind of the direction?
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean. So what you end up with essentially are two parking lots.
And that.
Two access points. And you could use either when you come in, I mean, because currently, like I said, that, you know, that parking lot in your one and two slide between Jermaine Marble and the library takes up half the parking.
And if you went with, and just as a question, if you went with three with that parking lot up the front, can you not utilize the curb cut that's on Maitland Avenue at all?
Well, I mean, that was, you know, you get the train line there and it is, that's, like Ryan was saying, that's a number of points of conflict in.
Well, but you're getting rid of, you'd still keep the orientation more looking like it is on two that way? Where the front of the building is still?
Well, I think you would still do that.
And then, but then you'd get the park, you'd get access points off the side. I'm just trying to think of another.
Well, I think, you know, a roundabout or a mobility court, we're calling them a lot in library design, is, is a really functional thing outside the front approach and drop-off zone for a library. And I think that would be a really nice and safe way to get people back out to a safer exit than on Maitland across that train line. So I don't know what the curb cut here would do if we liked the idea of kind of a roundabout to get people back out.
The access point on the other side with the train track is actually not as good either, right? There aren't, am I, when you come down Ventress and you go into that one parking lot, aren't you interfering with the train tracks down there?
Well, it is right here.
Yeah. You're conflicted, I mean, we are, it is what it is. The train tracks are there, fortunately, so either access point's going to have conflicts with the train. That Ventress side is not, it's kind of, it's, it's a little bit off the, difficult.
I, I, I agree that as, that's more of a secondary street than Maitland. And so, the traffic on Maitland is more and the train there. Whereas on Ventress, the traffic isn't as much as Maitland.
Yeah.
You know, but that's, there's probably a slight difference.
I'm looking at the, I mean, I'm looking at the, the train tracks. The train tracks from, looks like for the current entrance point to that parking lot to the train tracks is a very short distance on Ventress. But I don't, I don't know that funneling a bunch of traffic to Ventress is solving what you are returning the conflict point. I don't think that's fixing the conflict point with the train.
I think, I think we would agree with that. I, and frankly, I think that's why we suggest one and two. It avoids those conflicts altogether.
So, so stop, I'm taking my time here.
Thanks for the train.
Oh my gosh, you never gave up my time, Mike. That's where I went wrong. I'm with Mike in that I think if we come off of Ventress, you're still going to have that problem with backing up traffic because it's not that far from the train track to Maitland on Ventress. It's probably 40 yards. So I, I see that being a conflict. Also, I mean, you don't have angle parking there. I think that's a problem when you're backing up, especially if it's at nighttime and you can't see. If you have angle parking, it helps you to see what's behind you a little bit. So I don't like that right there. And yeah, I think you have the problem. If I was parking there and I was trying to get through, I, my conflict would be I would get mad at people because I'd, I'd be stuck there and I, you know, trying to get people in and out is going to be a pain in the butt. So everybody knows, we have so much money that we can use for this. And what we're trying to do is do it within that realm of money. When I was here earlier, I said, if we do a parking structure where the existing is now, would you have planned in one and two? And we had a second level parking structure, would that almost cover what we need? So that's my one thought, I'd like to address that here in a minute if we could. Because I know that would, but that would probably cost an extra million dollars, which we don't have. And we don't have a lot of money, if any, in the city to pay for that. Have we thought about doing parking agreements with the people next door? Have we thought about even looking maybe if that's purchasable to buy and create parking there? You know, I know at one time, so I had somebody on the way here and they were like, well, wasn't that going to be a parking deck? And I said, well, that was the original plan, but we're putting the library there now. And they were like, well, what happened to the parking deck? And I said, well, it's expensive. I said, it's like $20,000 of space. And they're like, so we're going cheap instead of doing the right thing? I said, we only got so much money to work with. But if it was you, okay, or you, what would you, and you had whatever you could do? Because I know this is in our A plan. And that's my concern. Are we, is that, are we not doing what's best for the future? We're just doing best with what we have right now. Would you recommend this or would you recommend another parking level, a parking deck? What would be your primary pitch to us if, if you had this?
Well, I, I think it's probably important to note that to start with, the ordinance for this building would only require about 66 spaces. And we're showing 82 in each one of the three schemes. So, you know, there's a formulaic approach to it by ordinance that we'd have to provide. We're providing more than that. Your question then is going even beyond that, you know, for all the parking problems around this immediate area, you know, how to get more.
Oh, you're just talking one more parking?
Yeah, well, if you added one more deck, I mean, you'd, putting it right on top and doubling this parking isn't going to work because you have ramp area that, and turning area that takes up, you know, you don't maximize all the parking. So you don't double the parking just in that same footprint.
Right.
But it's also, you know, a structure that is maybe not as conducive to the aesthetic of a park, right there at a park. So if you're, you know, you're saying that things, what Ryan was suggesting, on the grade plane, we can mitigate the impact of that parking surface to the environment of the park. Probably a lot easier than we could a concrete or brick or some massive two-story structure that's a parking structure. I think the question really has to be, what is the amount of parking we're providing? Is it the ordinance? Is it more than the ordinance? Is it less than the ordinance? I know there is a, kind of a idea on trying to do more shared parking in areas and reduce the amount of parking in the immediate downtown. So that might be the real question to start with, you know, and, and then go from there.
Yeah, well, I know when I go visit a neighbor's library, not naming the name, that, that's always a problem. So what I would suggest to everybody here is we go a little bit over it. But I mean, with, so out of these three, one, and I gotta say, I, when I saw three, I love three because it really gives you that green space and it keeps all the parking close to the railroad track and makes that a whole park experience other than putting cement through a park. So, and then having your green space along the side of the railroad track. So I, I do love that, but I, you know, I'm with you, I see the major issues. So that's why I'm going, that's my question to you. I mean, I know we're like, we gave you a budget to work with, but is this what the best that you would recommend? Or is there an alternative to this that, you know, you would say, I would do this?
Well, so with your comment of liking three as well, I would propose this, because when we, we're talking about the roundabout here, the idea of the conflict with the train on Ventress. What if we move this curb cut to come out here? Still do, I, I think.
To the west of the train track?
Yes, so you come in and out here, get further down from the train track. Actually, we can even come as far as this corner and come in and then around like this, have all this parking here, over here, and then have the roundabout and get people back out that way in a really intuitive, understandable, less conflict of intersection and curves and such. And then if we wanted to, we could put a secondary lot too up here and have all of this contiguous green space. You know, I wouldn't, I came into the meeting thinking that there would be some kind of modification of these into one in some fashion. And that's just maybe one idea of that. And I'm trying to look at what all the council is suggesting is concerns. I'm looking at, well, how do we solve that concern? The only thing I heard about this with the roundabout was this train line here. Well, we can bring that curb cut all the way over to here. So does that help with that?
Yeah, do you think there's any issue that people, the traffic on Ventress, does that seem, I don't know if that's problematic at all either? I don't know.
Yeah, it's not like we're doing rock and roll shows there.
I mean, I think the idea, I think the idea of keeping the parking lot as is, John was actually saying like, the parking lot as is to the west of the building, in between the current buildings, the way it sits, seems to make some sense of just leaving that as is and serving as a parking lot. And then on the other side, seeing how you can work with, if it's possible. And then again, I think as long as you, I do think it's important to have the, on one and two, the, the front area and the, that whole kind of, I wouldn't want to see that disturbed with a shift to three. I think I, I think that entrance and having walkability from the downtown for people that aren't necessarily parking in the parking lot and they're coming in from elsewhere, I think having that inviting, opening to the library is important to keep. So I think if we can fix that by either, like you said, coming off of Ventress or, again, I think that's, I'm not saying it's a good idea, but a different idea of coming off of a different access point on Maitland. Something that keeps the front of that building intact and keeping that inviting for people from a walking experience from around. But then still allows some of that parking against the train tracks in some fashion. As long as that can be done safely, I think that makes some sense, but Gloria, I don't know.
Well, so I just want to say basically, although like I made it clear how it looks to my eye, my eye is, as I made quite clear, as good as a trial of the crayons. So to me, if I had that same instinct, but the experts were telling me the opposite of what my eye told me, I would still believe whatever the experts in the room were telling me, unless I had some sort of conflicting expert advice, which obviously can happen in certain circumstances, but is not happening here. I hear very clear advice from the people that we have literally chosen because they literally do this. And so, I am not hearing anything that makes me feel confident from a reliable sort of equivalent expert source that there is any reason we should do anything other than work with option one. I don't foresee, unless they're telling me something different at some point and you wake up and have a completely different opinion, I don't foresee that opinion changing on my end because I don't know why it would. I think that it is, I think it is frankly irresponsible to disregard expert advice for no, with no other evidence in front of us. And if I were a judge and I had an expert and 10 lay witnesses with their opinions, I, the same standard would apply. That being said, I do think, and I trust and I hear you saying, that no matter which option we land with, you will work with, like, that it is difficult and I can hear that it's frustrating, knowing what you know in your eyes and imaginations, to have, to be presenting this to us in the sense of, we don't have the same imagination as you. But what I hear you saying is that there are, there's landscaping and features and all sorts of things and things that haven't even been thought of yet, that could be tweaked and added to address all of our concerns, which I do think are valid concerns. I just don't think that we should, A, disregard the advice we're being given. And B, my other concern that I always get concerned about when I start hearing, can we go back to the drawing board and kind of like 67th options? I don't want to do anything or go down a path that is going to delay this project unnecessarily. That is another concern of mine and I just don't think, those would be my two primary concerns with both picking something other than option one and also with trying to get a seventh option or something like that.
Well, I'm with you and I agree. But I think when they gave that option for option three, they said they could bring it out closer to the tracks and move it. I think also what that would do is it would give a drop-off point, but then it would also, I, I'm looking on this and I see on one and two, to the right-hand side of the library, there's a purple like walkway or something. Was that a main entrance that we lost in option three?
Yes, so the building, option three would completely change the interior design layout of, of the building.
But if you did what you were just saying, where we could come in and have that.
Well, what I might consider is, right now, this is where we left off with phase one, building design, parking here to the west. There was an entrance here off of Packwood in that plaza space that mentioned you really like and feel you want to hold on to. And then one here on this west edge. And a common area through that space with new material and browsable material and service points. And the children's area was right up here in this quadrant here. What I would say is that this might change entrance to somewhere over here and get a bigger plaza here, have the roundabout here that would enter in over here and minimize the change to the plan that, you know, had been kind of discussed. I guess over here with the roundabout. So that you still have this pedestrian plaza kind of approach to this building from Packwood and Maitland Avenue intersection and from the parking that's on the east side. And then have also that entrance that is, was part of the final design under phase one here on the west side. So have those two. To speak to your point, here's my recommendation. I think without a doubt, option one is the best solution. And there's conflict though of understanding of the connection of A&amp;H to the park. I'd like to work on, you know, how that could be improved so that that isn't a disconnect. But I, as a professional in this, think this is a much better layout from a parking standpoint than this. The second option would be working on this one to make it better than it is and remove those conflicts that I think are problematic. And that one though, will probably require more rework of, of where we were leaving off of phase one.
Do you go with option three, not to, the negative on option three from a parking standpoint? If you're going to the library to park, you go into one lot, there's no parking space. To get to the other lot is not exactly convenient.
Right.
You have to go around and you'd have to fight, potentially fight two railroad crossings to get there. So I think option three with having kind of two bifurcated lots poses problems too. That's what I'm saying, there's not a great, I mean, I'm with you.
There's limitations with everything. I think transparently, my true concern is that what is motivating some of these concerns is not a true concern for what the vast majority of the community. is not a true concern for what the vast majority of the community would think or care about. And that is what is causing my concern transparently, is that we are, or this concern about art and history is not necessarily based on what our constituents would be primarily concerned with, understanding that some of our constituents would be. But I don't believe that that would be the primary concern if we had a true sampling of the community in here. And it's, you know, I wish, no matter what conversation we have, we never have a good sampling of the community in here, so that's just the way that it is. But I just genuinely don't believe. I do think, and I'm as excited as anyone, about the opportunity of tying together all of these assets of our community, and I would be equally concerned not only of any nuisance we presented with this, you know, whole project to art and history and what they already have going on, as well as making sure that it was clear that if I go to the library, I'll see art and history and think, oh, hey, I didn't realize we have an art or history museum here, because that's a true benefit of having this in this location, and I think we all think that. But I do feel, based on this design, that that could easily be accomplished in so many different ways, that I don't truly think that option one is a concern in the kind of easy workarounds, and to really just kind of go back and redesign the building, for what? Like, to me, it's just, it's bursting my brain with it.
Can I, let me say, so the, so the concern that I have, again, is, you know, it is mainly about A and H and their access to it, and it's also mainly about how we all access the area and how we all currently access the area. If you really look at number, slide number three, slide number three is an as-is slide. That is what exists, generally speaking, in a very large layout sense. And the parking is currently there. There is a building in the area there, it's currently in the senior center, which is going to be scraped, but it's, the parking was built there to access that senior center, which is kind of in the center, you know, it's south of where the building would be. And, you know, I, I mean, Laurie, I appreciate your concerns, but I mean, my concern's valid, and they're honest, and they're not disregarding any professionals. I've kind of, if we were to leave it to professionals, we wouldn't be having this workshop. What we're here tonight to do is to maximize this for all the community, and I think we can push back on plans and not be putting our citizens at risk. I mean, I think this is an honest-
Well, we often have professionals in here, and they all strongly speak this way. They're speaking more strongly than we normally hear people say. And we both have heard the concerns of art and history in here and them advocating for themselves, and that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, I hear you. The, it's not a crazy thing to put the 30 spaces on number three between Jermaine Marble and the library. I just counted it out, that's about what you have for the options one and two, right? This is not difficult to do. So those are 30 spaces roughly, I mean, maybe 32 or something, but it's something in that zone, right there, right there, yes, exactly. And if you do that and you leave that in option number three, let's create a new option number three A, and in that, you have 30 odd spaces between Jermaine Marble and the library. You're looking for another 33 spaces, right? I mean, you said 66-
These all have 82.
Right, but you, but to meet code, you need to hit 30 more spaces.
66, yeah, 66.
So, and I, and I can, you know, there's probably seven spaces in that configuration in number three right now. So you can really reduce, really reduce the number of parking spaces that you need down there. And it's not the parking nightmare that we're all making it out to be. If you put 30 spaces between Jermaine Marble in a nice configuration, because you've already done it, and you put another 40 down below, you know, it's-
I think the only maybe negative, maybe it's not a negative, is that you then have two disconnected parking spots.
But I'll say this about that, but I wanted to make this point earlier. The library's a very popular place, we all love a good library, but currently it has like six spaces up front, and it's not, and people survive, people live, and of course they have, you know, 30 spaces across the street, and sometimes that lot's about half-full. But on a day-to-day basis, if you put 30 spaces up there, nobody's going to be able to hunt for spaces on a day-to-day basis. I mean, it's, you know, you might have big programs where, you know, you might run out of space and then somebody can, okay, we'll all drive around to the side. It's not going to be, it's not going to be a daily problem. Or they can choose to go to the other lot, it just won't be a daily problem.
Have you looked at taking option one, so, and cutting a little bit more of the parking lot to the that side, cutting that down, and then on Ventress, and we have it, like Kings Row Park has this, where essentially along the street, there's just parking spaces. So essentially turning the far south side of, I don't know how many that yields, but essentially putting, right where your hand just was there, on the far left of the side, putting in just parking spaces. My issue with sort of the, this idea that the bifurcated parking lots is that it's really, it's really an overflow.
Right.
If you have to, you go to the backside kind of parking lot. And so I don't know if there's a way on option number one to keep a line of sight, keep the park, keeping it feel like a park. I think one of John's concerns is that, and I know you were saying that there's more land there than you think, but let's grab more of that land, take a couple, we only need, like you said, where you're overparking it, you only need 66 by code, and so you're overparking it, so let's, what would happen if you took some of those parking spaces off the far southwest side of that parking lot that goes in? Take those out, put in some straight parking on the back of the, on Ventress, and make that true just overflow when people can't find a parking space or when there's a big event, people know they can park off Ventress, walk through the park, but make that not really a go-to parking lot for the park. You don't like that, John?
No, yeah.
I mean, I know, I didn't know, I mean, I'm just asking, I mean, it's just a, it's a thought, because if you grab more of that as green space from a line of sight, I think, from a line of sight from the, from the arts and history that their venues, they'd grab more of a view to the lake, to retain upon, whatever it's going to be. And then you'd also open up that park a little more, and then that straight-in parking on, as we said, Ventress is not a super popular, it's not super busy, so I think people could back out safely on Ventress and just use that to pick up the extra amount of parking.
If I'm following what you're saying, like, this, this whole range right here can be removed from here and fit right here.
Right.
And maybe if you come east on Ventress and these are angled spots.
Angled straight in, yeah.
So you could take, you could fit all of this right here, right here.
Right.
And then people would have a pedestrian route to the library. It would essentially be all overflow, but then you would have more green space to flow, you'd almost have like a mall that is-
And I'm trying to open up their line of sight up to the park.
Yeah.
And I think, because I think there is valid concern there, and I also think that if you don't have real connectivity, if you don't have true green space between the two, you're really isolating that back part of the park to something that is that up to your top there. If you go with option number one and you leave that long green square up at the western side, is that really a usable part of the park or not? So if you can open up that corridor, take some of those parking spaces out, shift them onto Ventress, and then use that to open up the spaces, I don't know if that's an option.
So there's 10 spaces, you're just talking the ones that butt up right there, and then put, could, well, 10 spaces fit there on Ventress?
So if you just took the 10 right here?
Yeah.
There's more room here on Ventress. So you could, you could, you could actually pull this back a little bit more, probably almost to this island here, in the roundabout here, get immediate parking for the library right here, and more than the 33, but not encroaching so far into this green space here. You could, you can make this a contiguous green space going almost east-west and add that 15 to maybe even 20.
And I, I like Mike's idea, because it also gives people who don't want to go to the library some parking just to go to the park.
But-
You know, if I want to bring my dog and let him out, I don't have to go through all that, I can just-
I don't think that's a dog park. I think if you're doing, just kind of like the difference between one and two, for example, to me, what I would, I hear Mike saying at this point, to me, is qualitatively similar to the difference between one and two. It's addressing some of those concerns that I agree are valid, but my concern becomes when we're doing something so drastic as three is that it's, A, not advisable, and B, is requiring us to essentially go back to, I don't want to say square one, but to a major redesign. And to me, that's the issue. So if, if something like, you know, Mike's suggesting, obviously there's some redesign of drawings, but I don't think that sounds like that would require a redesign of the building.
No, and as we just talked, and you all weighed in on that, I think it also actually presents other opportunities versus negatives.
Because that's really like the primary thing to me that with option three, like I already expressed before, but I think anything like that where we're just sort of reconfiguring things, particularly two, some of the other suggestions were, with the two-split parking, we're kind of almost more like half of it here and half of it there, which is more of a concern. I think what we're talking about now, it sounds like kind of true overflow parking, like, I think he's saying 10 spaces. I know that's kind of, Mike's pulling that out of his pocket, but, you know, if it's something like that-
10 to 15.
Yeah, then that is, you know, again, more overflow parking kind of thing, yeah.
Yeah, it's a great alternative. Also, these are, these are good ideas, I think we need to, you know, kind of, I think that the goals are to not make an island of A and H over there and to kind of keep that park open as it is. Again, and the only reason I was using a number three is the current layout, because you can see what current, how nice that big park is. It's all one continuous piece, and one and two, just chop it. And so I, if there's, there are ways to maintain kind of a green swath through there and maintain the access, maintain the aesthetic, you know, beauty of it. And I think, again, you know, I think what we did with one and two was we really, on three, you chopped out the parking to those 10 spaces that are currently between A and H and the library, and you don't have to do that. I mean, you can leave that the same number as, if you took one, two, and three, and in three, you just had the same number of spaces there, your 30 odd spaces. You're really only hunting for 30 or 40 more, or maybe, you know, if you want to get up to 82, I mean, we could find it, but there are ways, I think, to get around that. If we, if we lose the whole drive lane altogether, you know, that's fine, if that creates too many conflicts, you know, aesthetically is a problem, you lose the, you know, the nice entryway, it's not worth it, so, you know, we can get around that. But, so, since we're all here and since we have such a nice turnout, and when there be any objection to any, we open that big pump here.
It's a great idea.
Okay. So we'll just use the traditional rules here, we all align, which if anybody wants to voice an opinion on this, please feel free to go do that, at the podium up here, and we turn on a microphone and we're going to talk a little next to the right table. And we'll, you will give several minutes, three minutes to have an opinion, because we've got plenty, and let's hear from others. So the whole period is open, please come up to the podium, anybody who has a question.
I'm Bob Allen, 1651 UNE Dance Court. And looking at the plans that we have there, I've got a couple of questions and maybe need to suggestions also of it. There could be some explanation on as far as handicap parking, accessibility, drop-off again, if there's not that loop, you know, how accessible is it would be, how many spaces for handicap, as far as the senior citizens being able to get, you know, into the library with these. Some of that looks like it's a long walk to the front door. Also, with the reconfiguration, if there is one on three, how extensive would that be, and is there a time issue to get that corrected or adjusted?
Okay, well, Bob, what we'll do is we'll take your questions and then, and pose them to the professionals one at a time. But first, we'll have the entire public period. Thank you, Bob.
Hi, Stephanie Barber, 390 West Ventress. I really like the idea of putting the parking lot, you know, based on those extra pieces on Ventress, and then that seems like it solves all your problems. You end up with a big green space, you end up with reducing that parking. I like, I like number one, but I see that it's really breaking up the green space. But if you can chop off that last little bit of the parking lot, you end up with kind of everything you wanted.
Okay, thank you very much.
David Baker, 957 Versailles Circle. I got to tell you, looking at number three, if I were driving through there, I would feel like I was being swallowed by a snake. Coming down this narrow passage, tight parking, you don't know whether those are good spaces, whether the rest of it's full, so you have to come back and around again. And that's, that's bad from a human factors point of view. You should be able to see the closest spaces and know whether that's where you should pull in, instead of going past all of these that are probably going to be empty. And this is an urban park, this is not state forest, where you need contiguous open space for wildlife and habitat. These architects, our staff can work out, making it all work together, regardless of how, we do need to avoid walling off A and H, that would be a catastrophe, but I think three is also a catastrophe.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baker.
Hi, Daniel Thomas, the executive director of Art and History Museums of Mayland. First, I just want to comment, it's wonderful seeing you all problems solved together. I do think the last option that you mentioned, where you kind of shrink the parking in number one and then add the extra spots on Ventress, is a really great option from a couple of perspectives, just from the perspectives of our history museums of Mayland, and preserves our green space, our access to the parking lot directly adjacent to the Jermaine Marble building, we have a lot of caterers that load in and out of there, so if that was shrunk, that would be a big problem for the library, it'd be competing with that space with us at times. But just from the other perspective for placemaking, when you're really thinking about a collective community, having that green space preserved from the Art and History Museums of Mayland over to the library, over to the Civic Center, over to Lake Lily, I think that's a really beautiful solution to create a really cohesive community space.
Thank you, Dan.
My name's Frank Allen, 1649 Comanche Trail. I just have one comment, and that is that I would be very concerned if the parking lots are split and not contiguous, because I think human nature being what it is, people will want to drive to the lot that's closest to the building first, and if it's full, they're going to get a little frustrated and have to go all the way back around. And to me, that's just not, that's not good planning. And I have some other thoughts, but I think that would be my strongest reaction to what's being discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Hi, I'm Stacy Larson, I'm the director of the library. I think your idea about moving a little parking to the Ventress for the park, not a bad idea. I don't favor number three, primarily from a security standpoint. I have a lot of very young people who work at my library, and we work very late at night. And so if you come in at 5 o'clock, especially if this were a bifurcated parking lot, like the last thing I want is two people parking on the west side of the library and three teenage girls parked down by Ventress and having to get there at 9:15 by themselves through the park alone at night. So that, that fills me with some fear that, for my staff and their security. I like my staff to park together, and I like them to leave together. I would also point out that I like 82 spaces. I mean, you know, we do have eight spaces directly in front of the library right now, we have 25 across the street, but the reason that works, and the only reason that works, is because the Civic Center provides a lot of art and group parking. Typically, you will find 30 cars in their lot every single day. They, they're our staff parking lot right now. So, you know, keeping as many spaces as we can get reasonably without eating away at the park would be good, because we're already using those spaces, they're just being stolen from the Civic Center very graciously because they're good news. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Stacy.
Mike Thomas, 16 Tuscorer Trail. My thought is you just have to make parking simple. There's one entrance to a parking lot. That's all the parking is. It's right next to the building and then the lead. And when you start dividing things up, you're just creating more complications. And I'm not sure if the problem you're solving is worth the solution.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Patty Brennan, 118 Cove Trail, 39 years. What I'm seeing here, and my favorite three, only because you have a train literally in the park on the other two. Now, I understand that there's fencing and there's burning and everything else that goes along with it. You still have a train where the kids are going to be playing, if they're going to be playing. And that to me is, is something that most mothers don't particularly care to see happen. All right? And, you know, if they could move the library building up to where the little parking lot is, and then you make all the parking right there on this corner, you've got a completely continuous parking lot by the train, which makes it easier for parents to get in and out. And you don't have to worry about the kids kicking the balls into the fence or over the fence into the train. And that's, that's where, that's the reason I favor it.
Okay. Thank you, Patty.
Good evening. Brian Stewart, 2216 Thunder Trail. You guys don't have an easy decision, so I don't envy you. And you've all offered a lot of good ideas. I'm actually intrigued by the idea of reworking number three, especially as, at least with the map that I see. It essentially truncates the parking that exists there now. If it were to scale, that entire space would be full of parking, as, as the mayor had indicated before. And, and while I know a lot of people in the audience have said that obviously if we explored that idea, it may result in a non-continuous two-parking lot type situation. Doing that would enable us to keep the grand entrance in pedestrian-friendly designs of one and two. If you combine that, and then in theory, you could even contemplate shrinking that parking lot adjacent to the, where the senior center is now, with respect to having essentially the existing space that you currently have between the library and A and H. And as a parent of four children, it does occur to me that if you have the parking lot, if you keep the parking lot currently along the train line, you effectively create essentially another barrier there between people and where the green space will be. And to the point of the members of the council who are important about connectivity with A and H, I, I think that's an important thing because they're an important part of our community. And part of the sort of grandiose design was to try to create synergies between all the cultural assets downtown. So, if you were able to keep that contiguous green space, you could envision all kinds of events and random crossings and pathways that would bring foot traffic to A and H and then also foot traffic to the library. But if you also keep the existing parking space that exists between A and H and the library, that is a sort of a joint parking space effectively by default, which then gets used by both entities for all manner of events. So, I realize there's no perfect solution in this. There's trade-offs with each one. But number three, reworked, is intriguing because I think it's important that we, we take care of all our cultural partners downtown. But again, it's not a perfect solution. It's just simply one of many. And again, you guys all have an easy task, but I know you'll make a decision eventually. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Good evening, that Aitlee 100 Tansola Court. First of all, I'm assuming this is permanent wall parking lots, not solid asphalt or solid concrete, correct?
Those details in that.
Pardon?
Details aren't in there yet.
Okay. So I would vote strongly for a permanent wall parking lot for many reasons. We don't have to get into that. I agree with Stacy, 80 versus 60, because the venue provides so much overflow for the current, the current library. So we don't want to, we don't want to restrict. We don't want individuals having to cross, you know, Boulevard from Bank parking lot or something. The size of the retention pond, the runoff, it has to be that big? I guess that's another question.
Still determined to add its place over short.
Okay. Is it just looks excessive, particularly in three? I think Ventress, to have 10 or 12 parking spots in that is, is a good idea. And then, I know these are old images, but I strongly, I do not support having palm trees on the lot. Planting new trees should be oaks or something like that. That would be my recommendations.
Okay. Thank you, Beth.
Good evening, council. My name is Renee Charline, 201 West Horatio. I'm also here not just as a resident, but also among the venue on Lake Lily. And we're very happy that we're able, we're really able to think about true synergy among the cultural holders and being involved in that. I think in, in, for my perfect world, if I could wave the magic wand and come up with the money, to me, we need a structured parking solution. But, you know, I guess that's, that shouldn't say unfortunately. But I do feel it's extremely critical that we are all in this as a community. It isn't just the library. It isn't just art and history. It isn't just the venue. We've got to figure out how we all can really cooperate together and support one another. And the closer, the more connection, you know, I can easily see the benefits of one, with the parking area between art and history and the library, if it is done in that permanently way that you wouldn't realize it's a parking area as such, you know? That type of thing. I, I really personally don't think of having this parking area totally disconnecting, yet as we have in one, where, you know, you have just this little thing up there, like what's that going to do? So if that were to be really pulled back, like that has been discussed, where you could truly then see this beautiful green space. I'm conflicted with the idea that there is a railroad track and we are moving the park towards that. That doesn't make sense to me. Because when I see what the railroad track requires, I mean, look at what we have on Maitland Avenue. It's a chain link fence and, you know, there's that requirement that we have. So I don't know how attractive that will be to our park. So that's like, how is that really? So you got, you know, I'm married to an architect, so I, I sympathize with you. But I will tell you this that I know, when you have true professionals, which I obviously believe you to be, you're hearing all this. What you are going to come back with is something that's even better than what we even are imagining. I know that because I've seen it happen over and over again in, in my life. So, the connectivity between art and history and the library is critical. People aren't going to necessarily, don't think that they're just going to the library and they could care less about art and history. In my world, they're, they're, they're going to both. So somehow tying those two together is, I think, important. And how you can create a park in the atmosphere up against the railroad tracks, not quite sure how that's going to happen when I see what we have now on Maitland Avenue. The idea of, of, the other thing I'm thinking about is dumpsters and that type of thing, you know, the back of the house. I personally don't like to think of that as being between art and history and the library. That doesn't seem like it would really be a good, meaningful place there. So, again, my world would have a structured parking facility with a liner building and, and connectivity. But downtown needs parking. We can't always assume that we're going to have Wells Fargo and all those places to park. I'm sorry, I'm taking a long time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Renee. Anybody else? Like vigorous participation, I think we had about 80% of the, we heard of them. All right. Well, thank you for all that. Because I know certainly we're not the, don't have a corner of the morbid on ideas. So I think that's a little more thrown into the mix for you all. So, I guess what we want to do, we're going to have to make a decision at some point. And we're down, uh, closing the whole period. We're satisfied. We're, we'll probably make this decision, I think, as a group when Lindsay comes back. And we're not here to make a decision tonight anyway. But, and I'm sure she'll listen to the program and will be up to speed on all this. But I, I think what I hear is, can you come back with other plans that, that kind of, you're not going to go up with a plan that solves it for everyone, obviously. There's got to be, you know, some give and take everywhere. But the idea, I think, is to, if you, I don't know how long it would take. Do you have any idea to how long it would take you to come back? Well, first, before I, before I lay this in your lap, I did promise Mr. Allen that we would answer the questions that were put. And maybe you can help us answer some of those. I think Bob Allen's first question was about handicap parking. And in these various plans, where would that be and how much of it is there?
Yeah, I did take notes of all the questions. And, you know, right now, again, this is very early development too. So a lot of the details are not worked through previous payment discussions. The handicap spaces though, to start with, will be easily accessible and by the entry and at a number that meets the code and the ordinances for this type of space. So that is one part of it. The other part of it is the access route to the front door will be very accessible. We are now doing what's called zero curbs, so that there's no even ramp up to a sidewalk. It's all the same grade right, right into the entry of the building. So all those ADA and accessibility issues will be very carefully considered through the process. Mr. Mayor, do you want to?
Yeah, if you go ahead with your lesson, I'll see.
Uh, the next one was about the schedule. Yeah. Anytime there's a little bit of step back and rethink and redo, there's, there's an impact to the project's schedule. We'll be doing our best to maintain that as, as much as we can. A lot of things do happen in, in design that, you know, it's the nature of stepping back one or two steps to go three or four steps forward. So our, our intent would be to try to keep the schedule as is without any major impacts. Yeah. Then there were some questions about people expressing opinions of liking one with the Ventress parking. Parking three is catastrophe. A and H likes the, kind of, the idea of modifying one. Don't like disconnected lots. Likes the safety and modifying of maybe one with the Ventress parking. Keep it simple. That's a good one. Kiss, you know, approach. Yeah. And that is, that, actually, that is one of the things that helps from a building safety standpoint as well. The train was mentioned a couple of times and the actual placement of parking may be up against that to be an added buffer. Like to rework three. Would like to remake, or the, the size of the retention pond. And that is, is another detail that is not yet defined as design, as placeholder at the moment. No palm trees. Structured parking was mentioned. So, Mayor, maybe to your question in particular, yeah, I'd like, I'd like to make some additional sketches for the next discussion that takes this input and to voice some of the thinking now, as I think we're working on one and three. I think one is taking back parking here, getting green space connected here and putting some parking on Ventress. Option three would be pulling this back, giving the roundabout here and maybe a smaller lot here. Another one with three.
A bigger lot there, I think.
Oh, a bigger lot, yeah, I'm sorry. Another one with three though too, is that maybe this area can be parked more than even here. So I, I think though, those two, one and three, we could make some new sketches that could be reactive to the things we've heard today.
Can I ask a question on, on the, the park issue? To, to, like in Central Park in, I don't know what they call it, in Park Avenue, the, the fencing that's along the park is like wrought iron.
Was the road?
Around the, yeah, on the backside of the park along railroad tracks. They're not, it's not super high, right? I mean, we're talking, I think it's like a three or four foot wrought iron with a curl on the side there, right? So.
Something we have out here in Ventress Park.
Right. And then what would be the, so on the backside of Lake Lily, there's that access point where you can go across the railroad tracks on pedestrian side. That parking lot, which I don't think we've taken much into consideration, but the existing parking lot that's on the corner of Ventress and Maitland Avenue right now, that provides parking, if that is part of the equation here and you potentially have that kind of, I don't know what it takes to permit mark the, that kind of rail crossing for just pedestrian purposes. But if not bringing people back out to the road, but that's another parking lot option, that if you're getting people on Ventress with overflow, there are still parking spaces in that parking lot that I don't think we're planning on getting rid of. So I think that that provides.
The current space, the loops for the library.
Right. The current spaces for the library. I don't, I don't know if you're using that in any of your numbers right now, but.
Yeah. You're, you're talking about this little lot.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, we're not using that in account.
So, I mean, that, if, if we're saying that essentially parking off Ventress, straight and angle parking spaces, whatever on that, on that south side, become a parking option for the park and then also an overflow for the library, and then you've got parking in that one lot, that might give you just some options and then it opens up the parking counts for all of this. And then if you, if you look at that, just if, if there's something we can do to improve that connectivity, it might be a bold, and Mark shook his head, it might be a bold ask to try to get another pedestrian crossing there. But something that could connect, maybe even an improved sidewalk on that lake, on Ventress there, linking that current parking lot to park. So that's just the, the thought.
Yeah. I think there are a couple of things there. I think it's extremely hard to get an additional crossing across the railroad, just the authority doesn't allow it this day and age. It'd be, it'd be tough. We could approach it. We could put a concept together. I do think we could do some things to improve the crossing, however, on Ventress to get people down quicker, make that more pedestrian friendly. And, you know, the comment about how do you, how do you create a barrier between a railroad track and a parking space? I think, you know, the Winter Park, Central Park is a great example. I think your park right outside the store is a great example. I mean, this is a park directly beside a railroad track, extremely successful. Kids are playing out there. My own kids play out there. And it's barricaded in a way that's not intrusive, but no one would think to venture towards the railroad track, in my opinion. And I think we could create that environment here. And in fact, I was involved in creating that exact barrier condition. We could address it the same way.
So, and that leads to the other question, I think, which was kind of hang out there about timing and, and cost, I guess, is also part of that. But how long would it take, do you think? Or how long, I mean, we, I guess we anticipated that this was going to be a decision that was going to take some time anyway. This was part of the schedule. I mean, how, how far off are we talking?
Yeah. I think, actually, we were thinking, our next progress meeting is engineering-driven for the building. And I think we need to hold off on that because if it does go to three, that's going to change the interior layout of the space. So I think I need to suspend that meeting, focus on the parking. And we can turn that around, you know, pretty quickly for another discussion. And, you know, not sure when the next workshop is or.
We could just, we could throw on a regular agenda too, and you could zoom in versus.
Okay. Yeah. When would that, when would that be?
The next one would be September 23rd.
Yeah. And then we could.
Or we could schedule another workshop too.
Or we could schedule another workshop too, for the City Council.
Well, I mean, we could do that for, and if you wouldn't mind zooming in and then we share those.
Do the work for you?
Sketches, we can make that work, I think. That's, that's the scheduled meeting.
Yeah, that's our regular scheduled meeting.
Let me ask John, you were, you were much favoring three. Do you, after hearing A&amp;H, at least one representative from A&amp;H say that if we pull back on number one, it would give them the connection, are you as wanting to explore three or are you?
Well, I guess it may depend on how far you can pull back from number one, right? I mean, to how much could you, where would that parking go? I mean, I know we're talking about, we have better people who are going to do it than were going to do non-contiguous parking there. Why wouldn't you just do three? Or some variation of three. I mean, I think three is, I think three is, as it's presented, is a more. So, I mean, I think any variation of three has to be really reworked.
Right. Because I think what we're hearing is the path of travel off of Ventress down to any kind of parking is going to get difficult. And there may be challenges on doing a roundabout and then reorient. It would cause a reorientation of the building. And then you'd have two, kind of, two front entrances and you'd have to rework how that would look. Whereas if you did just a, and I think we've, I think to your point, I think we could get 60-something spaces, if not more, in an increased green space parking area on number one, that would probably get a lot of the needs, if not all the needs, of most library functions. And then if you pulled some of the parking on Ventress and then tried to have connection to that existing lot, that would also provide some of that overflow. You, I think we may be looking at a decent enough green space corridor and landscape for A&amp;H. And I think that would be, I think that's solving some of the problem. I'm just, I don't want to chase down a, something, or send them on a, on a potentially impossible task.
They seem like they had it all in hand.
Well, and I would. So I would actually propose, instead of the 23rd, to meet sooner. Because we could turn around those two sketches. I like what you're saying. Because I think if we show you one with the changes that we talked about, I think that'll have a whole new perspective for it. And you may like that. And if we like that one, that's going to save a lot of time in rework of the interior design and layout of the space. At the same time, we could produce a sketch of three, which is input of what we've heard. And then you'll have the ability to say, okay, does one solve it? And I would only say, change one word of what you're saying was, it's not adequate. We're setting out to make this the best park and library and destination that it can be. So, you know, I think it'll be really, I think this input has made one, in my opinion, be probably the most attractive option. But we'll show three as well. And then you can, you can.
But modify.
Could we do this sooner than the 23rd? Is there a way we could meet in a week and a half?
As the calendar's free up, we already do speak time of day. Jeff and old Mike love six o'clock meetings.
Six o'clock during a rainstorm.
Yeah. Well, at six o'clock, we're usually sprinting in for an apartment.
Yeah. So we heard what?
Well, let me say, so for the planning of it, do we, are we going to workshop there?
Yeah, sure.
But.
Because we just need some direction on how to move forward. But we need firm, we need firm directions, there'll be a decision.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we need to have a formal vote to put you on your way. And if that's the case, then we need to do it as a meeting.
And we can, we can have a special meeting.
We can do a special, I mean, yes, just.
Just a day, it's just a day, yeah.
So I'm happy to do it. And as soon as, I mean, what's your time to go?
A week and a half would be. Yeah, two weeks, that would be great. Three weeks is a little long in that kind of, like I said, of.
Right, and I don't want to hold up your engineering meetings or anything if we don't have to. So, I mean, as soon as you can do it, I can be available. I mean, and everybody's got their own schedule for all people with lives. So what do you all feel? Think we can meet again, a special meeting on this, if we have to?
I'm looking at two weeks, it's September 18th.
Which is also.
A Wednesday.
L.A.B. also has some rooms for me. Yep, at 6:30. Orlando City game, so. Orlando City game. So Tuesday, the 17th, or Thursday, the 18th?
I can't do Thursday.
I'm good, the 17th.
Could you do this, what about, London is 16th, what about?
They were tightening it down for your schedule.
I don't know how long that's going. They were, they were, they were seeming like they were going to be ready.
As long as you don't need this, because if we're doing it, if you, you know, the key's going to be, are you going to want to see these before the meeting? Because if we're doing it on Monday the 16th, that would push us back to Thursday to get the agenda out to you Thursday, the 12th, to get the agenda out to you. Are you going to go on the 17th more? I mean, Mike Wald?
16th would be a tough thing for me.
Would it be 17th or 18th? Well, 18th, we have L.A.B. in here, no? Or, I mean, I think we need someplace else. I mean, you guys have to have some truck hours. Yeah. Across the street at the sushi place?
Well, we, we, well, it's also going to, Lindsay's going to weigh in on this. So we'll figure this out. We've narrowed it down, some, probably in the middle of that week.
Shoot her on the 18th-ish.
Yeah.
We'll shoot for the 18th.
I can do anything up to the 19th.
Does time matter? Do it at noon versus Saturday? I'm good either.
No, I don't do Monday.
Noon, do we get free lunch? Laurel's saying at noon, that's what we'll.
It's not that it doesn't work, well, actually, that day it does not, but for me night, that is.
So I feel, shoot for the 6:30.
My suggestion, breakfast.
Well, breakfast is all without me anyway, but yeah, so.
So, Laurel's are, obviously, touch base.
Yeah, awesome, smoke signals, texts, emails.
So do you think, just before, do you think you have clear direction on what one and three should look like?
I do, I, I, yeah. And.
And what I, what I can say is as soon as they get it to me, I'll get it out to you in a general format. So probably won't meet our normal schedule. Might be the day before, but I'll try to get it in your hands before we meet. Kind of like what we did today.
Okay. All right. Well, anybody have anything else for the?
No.
Well, we appreciate you coming all this way. I mean, for your.
I want to thank everybody for taking the time to get up to the left turn and, and give the feedback. That was very helpful to them. So thank you guys very, very much for taking your time out to attend tonight and give feedback, it was very helpful. Thank you guys for being here.
Yes, absolutely. And thank you all for coming. And we'll just look forward to reconvening in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you everybody.